Welcome, everybody, to this afternoon's F E R D Committee of the Whole Meeting. And the first item on the agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first item is a motion for your consideration relative to the provincial health order that enables us to hold this meeting entirely electronically. So I'll just read it aloud, as I know some members are joining us via phone, and it reads that due to the provincial health order issued on December 4th, the Fraser Valley Regional District conduct meetings without the members of the public present in the boardroom, and that the Fraser Valley Regional District continue to promote openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability by webcasting and archiving board meetings online, allowing members of the public to write, email, call in, or appear by Zoom with questions, and promote public participation at meetings through social media channels.
Thank you. That's moved by Director Clute, seconded by Director Fazio. All in favor? Pose if any item carries. Next item.
Next item is approval of the agenda, addenda, and late items.
Thank you. Moved by Director Fazio, seconded by Director Adamson. Any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose if any of the item carries. Next item.
Next item is 3.1. We have the 2021-2025 financial plan budget presentation. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Lonsborough, who will take you through the budget.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Lonsborough. And I understand this is, we're going on a marathon here. The EA Directors and yourself and a number of other staff have been meeting since earlier this afternoon. So I appreciate I appreciate the length of your day here. We will try and be very efficient with our questions.
Thank you, Chairlum. It's been a great afternoon so far, and we're looking forward to the rest of it. So, good afternoon and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you for your time today. For those of you who haven't met me, who I haven't met directly, I'm Kelly Lonsborough, the new Director of Finance and CFO for the Fraser Valley Regional District. I'm happy to be here. I joined the F E R D in the summer, and about three weeks after I joined, we launched the budget process, and here we are today. So we have a short amount of time today and a packed agenda. We will be covering 23 budgets in these two hours. This is 23 out of 119 budgets that we manage. This presentation format is possibly more fulsome than discussions in the past. The main objective is for me to be comfortable that you have enough information that you need to make informed decisions. I expect us to get into a good rhythm, as Chairlum says on the slides, and dig into when we need. The budget owners, the experts, are here to present their budgets. So the agenda is shown here and is essentially laid out to walk you through the evolution of the budget process. Okay. It looks like we're just having some PowerPoint issues here. Pardon me.
It wouldn't be Zoom, it wouldn't be a virtual meeting if we didn't have some kind of technical challenge. So it's all good.
Okay, thank you. We're just going to move to slide 76 here. Okay. So the budget direction for this financial plan was conservative austerity. We are in a global pandemic, and we don't know what to expect. We have not included a lot of expansion or new services. We have taken the approach to look at what is needed, not what was done before. Look for efficiencies, refocus dollars on line items that are more of a priority. Evaluate forecasts. All determine what is really required. This financial plan does not include any new full-time staff positions. There may be projects that require temporary resources, but we are committing, we are committed to keeping the budget lean. Risks are important to consider in the development of a financial plan. What can the budget tolerate? We know there are financial risks, such as low interest rates, lower-than-expected revenues, and higher costs in some cases. Staffing risks in a global pandemic make us consider what is possible to achieve and focus our business on our business continuity planning. We asked budget owners to really consider what is required to maintain our infrastructure, our assets, in a state of good repair, and to evaluate the level of reserves and surplus balances that are available for these purposes. We see that we have a lot of work to do in these areas, and that is why Ms. Kineman and myself agree on the need for a capital asset plan, as well as a capital reserve policy. While our budget direction was conservative, there are some budgets that do have increases, more than inflation. We believe these are necessary for financial sustainability, and we will cover those later. The financial plan timelines are highlighted on this slide. We are in the final stages. After today's session, we'll be ensuring we meet the Local Government Act requirement for public consultation, and we'll be leveraging our website to do so. Later this month, we will be returning to the Recreation, Culture, and Airpark Services Commission to obtain their formal recommendation to the F E R D Board for adoption of the financial plan. After we receive your feedback today, we will make any necessary changes and return to you at the end of the month. Okay, so this slide represents assessment data that we received in November. It's preliminary. It shows the wide range of assessment changes by electoral area and member municipality. Changes are due to market increases in prices and are based on sales data from July of 2020. Non-market changes are changes due to property class changes, such as a property moving from residential to farm class, or from new construction. And the overall average for F E R D residential properties is an increase of just over 6%. Okay, so this slide shows the overall percentage of residential property assessments for each member municipality and electoral area. This is the basis of the regional taxation. While the scale may be difficult to see, it is intended to show that the proportion or the distribution of values can change year to year, and can result in some areas seeing larger-than-average increases in taxation. So areas with a greater proportion of residential assessments compared to the prior year, shown also on this slide, will pay a greater proportion of the regional taxation compared to prior years. This is Chilliwack, Harrison Hot Springs, the District of Kent, Mission, and Electoral Area A. Conversely, areas with a smaller proportion of residential assessments compared to prior year will play, will pay a slightly smaller proportion of the regional taxation compared to prior years. So Abbotsford, Hope, Electoral Areas, B, C, E, F, G, N, H. Okay. Next slide, please. I should note that we are open to questions throughout this presentation. I think questions as we go are welcomed. So I just want to make that, make that known. We spoke about that in our 1 o'clock meeting, but I recognize we didn't call that out in this meeting.
And I'll ask, sorry, Ms. Lonsborough, if you have a question, I can only see with the presentation, I can only see about half of you on my screen. So if you do have a question, just indicate with your, with your name, and I'll call.
Adamson.
Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
Um. One of my areas between Yale and Hope and Dogwood there, they just called me because they went up 33% on the assessment. So I'm just wondering.
So we don't do the assessments, we don't do the assessments, but I understand that they could, they could go to B C Assessment and challenge those assessments.
Oh, no, no, there's no problem there. They're doing that. I just wonder how it's going to affect the taxes for these people, like, you know, we've set the budget, and then the inflation goes up. They pay more, or?
I think what I heard, if they're above the average of the assessment, then their tax increase could be greater than the other, but I'd leave that to Ms. Lonsborough.
Um, that is correct, Chairlum.
So they would pay more?
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, I will continue on. This slide here talks about COVID-19 safe restart funding. So in November of 2020, we received COVID-19 safe restart funding of approximately $1.3 million. This amount was calculated based on a provincial formula. The funds, they're, well, with the funds, there are regular reporting requirements. The funds must be, must comply to the eligibility as outlined by the provincial government. We are able to allocate funds to areas that have had revenue shortfalls, such as the Vetter Campground, which seen significant revenue decreases because of COVID-19. We're able to allocate funds to expend dollars to upgrade technology, such as the recent boardroom technology improvements to facilitate effective Zoom meetings, facility operating costs, such as cost to install Plexiglas or other COVID-related costs. So far, we have allocated over half of the funds. We plan to continually monitor the needs and the usage of funds, and we'll come back to the board mid-year with a recommendation of the remaining balance. So this slide summarizes the allocation of funds that I mentioned on the previous slide. So to date, we have allocated just over $800,000 with funds towards those revenue shortfalls, such as the Vetter Campground. And that revenue shortfall is just over $200,000 to date. Computer and other electronic technology costs, including the boardroom upgrades for effective online meetings, that's at $297,000. Facility costs includes Plexiglas in office spaces and public-facing counters, so $37,000 on that to date. And there are other related costs, and we have allocated just over $250,000 for those. I should say that the, the proposed usage of funds, some of those funds are spent and some have not been spent. This is our allocation of the funds to date, and the balance remaining is just over $550,000.
Dicky.
Go ahead, Director Dicky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention. This is another example of the way in which the province chooses to address allocations of funding very differently from municipalities to electoral areas. So as I understand it, all the municipalities receives large funds in, for this program. The electoral areas receive zero. So just as a comparison, from the numbers, I saw the community of Harrison Hot Springs has received $675,000. My community has exactly the same population as Harrison Hot Springs. We received zero. So I think the electoral area directors look at the, the regional district funding as a small amount of money that should, a lot of it go to the electoral areas. We have costs, just like municipalities do, and we would like to see this funding directed towards us.
Ms. Lonsborough, and I know that's in a concern that I've heard brought up before, and I've spoken to a number of the other chairs in regional districts across the province, and it's an issue that we've brought up directly with the provincial government, an issue we continue to, intend to continue to bring up, because it does seem to be some, I guess, an unlevel playing field. But when you look at allocating some of these, the proposed uses of funds, some of these allocations will offset electoral area contributions to these, to these costs that would otherwise be there. Is that correct?
Yes, Chairlum, that is correct. We have received the funding formula, but the funding formula, we are not allocating based on that formula. We're allocating based on need.
And, sorry, so in terms of based on need, it's, there's also requirements by the provincial government, so we can't just say, put all this money into electoral area, into specific electoral areas. We have to prove losses or prove that these were COVID-related. Is that not correct?
Chairlum, that is 100% correct. They have to be based on one of these categories that are listed on the table. So they cannot be allocated to electoral areas without proven rationale that we can stand behind, such as revenue shortfalls or dollars spent because of COVID.
So I mean, I agree with Director Dicky's, I agree with the point he's making. And I'm just trying to figure out, in those allocations, if we're able to offset, you know, if we're able to offset what would otherwise be costs to the electoral area director. So in effect, apply these, apply this funding to what would otherwise be electoral area costs.
Chairlum, yes, that is correct. We are allocating some of these funds towards electoral area dollars that have been spent or will be spent, and some of that is already included, particularly in the other related costs.
Yeah, if I could comment, Mr. Chair, it's well-understood that the costs go to the regional district. It is not directed to electoral areas, and it needs to meet the funding requirements. However, I would ask the board and the staff to not overlook that there are costs associated with COVID to our electoral areas as there are to the municipalities, and not lose sight of that.
Yeah, no, I think the point is well-made, and I, go ahead, Director Bills.
Yeah, in reference to that, I would imagine that there's a lot of calls to, to field, to do with complaints, and also that the provincial government expects bylaws officers to enforce. But there's not really any funding for that specifically.
Yeah, I'm, I can't speak directly to those costs, but I would leave it to staff that they've heard loud and clear that, you know, to look at providing this surplus funding to, to, to places where we've, where we've seen associated expenditures or increased costs, and to do so, looking at, I guess, a fairness equation, where you look at electoral areas and regional districts receiving money for the services that have experienced losses or greater expenditures, but having municipalities also receive. So in effect, look for places where you're not going to have double-dipping. So best, I guess, my best way I can say that. I hope staff take that direction.
Director Angar.
Go ahead, Director Angar.
Thank you, Chair. Not meaning to muddy the water here, but for instance, during the COVID outbreak initially this last spring, huge influx of people into our valley, putting a tremendous strain on volunteers that clean up garbage. No services in place to adequately handle, no latrines, et cetera. So these are kind of intangibles, and I'm not sure how, how this would fit in with the sort of list of things I see before me here. So I just wanted to put that in everybody's mind, that there are some of these intangibles that are, I think, stresses on the communities that are not receiving these funds, and how they could gain some benefit by these funds to ameliorate some of the impacts of huge increases of people to the area during the COVID situation. Would be much appreciated. I'd appreciate if staff could put a thinking caps on that and get back to me with anything that could become available. Thank you.
Yeah, I know we've, in the city of Chilliwack, we've experienced probably increased costs to the city of Chilliwack by extending all the free dump tipping fees to the volunteer cleanup crews that have been working up in the Chilliwack River Valley, so. Yeah, no, I think the point is, is well-made, and I look to staff to ensure that they're applying these, these costs in a, in a fair and equitable manner. Yeah, well-meaning what the provincial government is, is requirements are before us.
If I could just throw in one thing further, Ms. Chair. In our case, having something, some type of ability to pick up periodically when Flynn Row is dragging their feet and things aren't getting done, any kind of funding in that regard, so that, for instance, could phone a, you know, any kind of an agency that can then come and do some brief work in order to keep things clean. That would be a huge benefit. Thanks.
Great. Okay, Ms. Lonsborough, let's continue on.
Okay, thank you, Chairlum. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. Here we are. So this slide summarizes the total regional budget tax requisition increase for 2021. Of the $387,000, $372,000 is funded by member municipalities, and 14 and a half is funded by electoral areas. Impacts to residential property owners are approximately $1.31 for municipal residents, or just under $1 for those in electoral areas. So the averages we use to estimate that are based on a property valued at $300,000 in 2020. And we've escalated, we've increased that in value by the average assessment increases for municipal and electoral area properties, respectively. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, hi, Adamson.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Do, through the chair, too, do we pay the same mill rate for everything as the city and this regional thing?
Through the chair, too, Director Adamson. No, there are two different mill rates, one for the electoral areas and one for the member municipalities.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, the next slide is, represents the total municipal increase of 400. So this is the member municipality tax requisitions, and we'll cover the electoral area tax requisitions in a moment. The total municipal increase is $482,000. That total wasn't shown across the top, but that is the total of all of those requisition increases from the member municipalities. $482,000 compared to tax levels in 2020. So this number represents a requisition increase of 5% overall compared to 2020. And this, this amount includes $372,000 towards the regional services, which we just talked about. $109,000 for subregional services. It also includes, yeah, so it includes regional services and the subregional services. So the total requisition increase equates to an average increase in property taxes for municipal resident property owners of $3.59, or 3.1% overall. Okay, and so Chilliwack and Mission increases for the average residential property are higher as a result of the increases in residential property assessments compared to the other municipal, member municipalities, which we, we touched on on one of the earlier slides. Okay. Okay, so this, this slide represents the electoral area, area-wide budgets. So each of these budgets, we will talk about, well, actually, the, the regional ones, we will talk about later on in the presentation. So here, we are proposing an $83,000 increase compared to 2020 taxation levels, and this is the equivalent of 2.3%. So we did talk about this for, for the full F E R D Board. We did speak about this table in the earlier session with the Electoral Area Services Committee at 1:00 PM. But for your benefit, we will talk about, I'll just cover off this briefly. So the column on the right represents an average residential impact for property owners in any electoral area. So we estimated this, assuming a $300,000 residential property in 2020. And we increased that in value by the average, which is based on B C Assessment's preliminary data in November of 2020. And that average was 5.6% for the electoral areas. You will see the average impact to a residential property owner amounts to $8.24 for the electoral area area-wide budgets. Okay. So the next slide. So the total requisition here, this is the electoral area tax requisition increases. The slide before just talked about the area-wide taxes. Okay, so this, this slide speaks about the total electoral area tax requisition, which not only includes the electoral area-wide services, it includes subregional taxation and the regional taxation, as well as electoral area services that are unique to each electoral area. So basically, this slide represents the taxes that are uniformly applied within each electoral area. And they do not include the specific service areas, such as partial taxes, as they are not uniformly applied to all properties in an electoral area. Okay, so the average impact of the total electoral area amounts to $14.57, or 3.6% overall for the average residential property. Now, the average residential property in all electoral areas is $431,000, based on the preliminary data we received in November. Okay.
Dixon, could I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead, Director Dixon.
Thank you, through you too, Ms. Lonsborough. And just because I've been staring at that 0% increase for Area G, and pretty much, how, how does that happen?
How does that happen? That's a great question. I'm just.
I mean, I want, I would like to have that one. So I, you know, maybe you don't have to answer it now, but I am curious about why there is such a difference in particular in Area G, so.
Was that Al didn't let anybody build anything there, or is that what happened, or?
To, through the chair, to Director Dixon, I'm just looking at the slide that we have for Electoral Area G. There was taxation last year in, for feasibility studies. So we did not tax this year for feasibility studies, so there was quite a decrease in taxation. So, so that really softened or, or, or covered up any of the other increases, if you will. It's probably poor choice of words, but it was a decrease for the average residential property owner of $12.51, because last year there was a tax, tax levied for feasibility studies. So it's all a comparison of what, what is taxed the prior year.
Thank you.
Okay. What number? All right, I'm just getting back in my slide presentation to my notes here on that. Pardon me. Okay, so this slide, budgets to monitor. Somewhat of a new view we've, we've, we've put together. This slide is really intended to bring awareness to risks that fall to the full F E R D Board. There are certain budgets listed above that are of concern, as the taxation levels have been historically low, and the reserves and surplus funds are not adequate to cover the eventual repairs and maintenance that will be required. We wanted to bring this to your attention to raise the risk, it is, as it is a risk to the full F E R D Board, even though they are, they're electoral area-specific. We plan to regularly monitor these budgets, and will continue to keep you apprised of the risks, of any risks to other budgets as well, such as these. Okay, pause for any questions?
So, Ms. Lonsborough, for, for budgets like this, so, and I understand you started the presentation talking about the need for capital asset management plans and capital replacement reserves. And is that something that you expect to, to be able to put in place, it would start to alleviate these, these budget-to-monitor kind of set items?
Thank you, Chairlum. Yes, absolutely. We continue, this will be, we plan to continue this as a theme for our work plan for this coming year. We, we do recognize there's a need for a capital reserve policy. So what that will be, will, will help seek a minimum, a minimum amount that should be contributed to on a regular basis, to make sure that we have funds, and that it's not, it's not a significant increase in the future for those, those taxpayers left holding the bag, for lack of better word. So, so you'll see here, we have the reserve and surplus balances listed on the far-right column, reserves and surplus. These, these, the taxes that we're proposing in this budget were not, were not accepted, so we are flagging them as a risk. You know, it speaks to, in, in the first meeting, through Director, Director Dicky on the electoral areas, we spoke about that fine balance between having fairness to the taxpayer, but also fiscal responsibility. And, and we believe that we Um, and, and we believe that we, the recommendations we made, the, in the column staff recommended tax increase are what is fiscally responsible to make sure that those reserves are, are adequate. And you can see the sewer system on the second row, Morris Valley Sewer, um, the reserves are, are quite dire. It is, uh, just the, there is a, the septic field alone could cost 200 to 250,000 dollars. So the, these reserves are nowhere near covering, um, the eventual repairs that we anticipate.
Director Loewen.
Go ahead, Director Loewen.
Director Pranger.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a point of clarification on this last point regarding, uh, reserves and surpluses. And specifically capital asset, uh, plan, whether the assets need maintaining or replacing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the cost of replacing assets or maintain them in any given electoral area is the sole responsible responsibility of the rate pairs in that area. Am I correct?
Through the chair to Director Loewen, yes, you are correct. That, that is right. The responsibility comes to those in that service area. But these are, these are a risk to the full FBRD board. Because if there's, uh, there's some, some kind of, uh, um, system failure in advance of having sufficient dollars, it's, uh, not only financial risk, it's reputation risk for the FBRD.
Thank you, and I suspected that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dicky? All right, go ahead. Uh, I've got Director Pranger and then Director Dicky.
The Chair, um, if this is a, a risk, is this just a reputational risk? Or is this something we should discuss further? Whether that increase is sufficient to, um, begin building the reserves and assets?
Um, go ahead, Ms. Lowesboro.
Okay, through the chair to Director Pranger. The latter, my response is the latter. It's not only a reputation risk, it's, it's a financial risk because, uh, the, these balances are not sufficient to, to cover, to cover, um, the eventual repairs of any system failure or, or replacement. To that end, we not only will be looking at a capital reserve, um, policy this year, we'll also be looking and making, making the, the efforts to start, um, developing a capital asset, uh, asset, asset plan. We should be planning that every year on what assets and what is the timeline, what are the timelines to be replacing our assets?
Yeah, Director Dicky, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just quickly, uh, through to staff, uh, do we have any numbers on what those, under best practices, what those reserve numbers should be at?
Um. Through, through the chair to Director Dicky, um, you know, I would be speculating from my experience in a somewhat different industry. We also, we looked at a 2% per year contribution based on the, the value of the asset. So if the asset's worth $2 million, you'd be contributing 2% a year. You know, it, it's much the same as a condominium, we, every year you contribute to a contingency. So in, in developing the policy, we won't be, um, just going off of experience. We'll be, we'll be consulting and doing research and best practices amongst other regional districts to make sure that we, we find that fine balance. Because once we set the policy, of course, the taxation levels will have to meet it. So, so we need to make sure that we maintain that fine balance.
Lou?
Go ahead, Director Blue.
Thank you, and I appreciate this, uh, this slide and the work that goes behind it and, and absolutely monitoring these things. And just, uh, further to the comment that was just made, Abusri just went through a very extensive process looking at exactly this. And while, uh, you know, a lot of our, um, trend lines are going in the right direction. One of the things that was identified was, um, a bit of a deficit in terms of this infrastructure, uh, funding. And so, you know, that's before us at the moment. And the, um, best practice there, just, um, to add to Ms. Lowesboro's comments, was 2% that we should be looking at. And, you know, some are higher depending on what the specific need is and what the asset is. But the, um, the asset inventory was so important to get there. And the, the big thing that hit me out of that was the, um, you know, today's dollars versus future dollars. And even projects that were bid out a couple of years ago, the cost can be twice what they were then, even in a couple of years. So if you look 10 years down the road or so to when your full asset depreciation was, it, it's very, um, it's not good practice to see these kind of numbers that we see here with zero increases. You never recover from them and it isn't a good way to keep your infrastructure. So I appreciate the work coming forward and all the work that's come to getting us to this stage. Thank you.
Dixon.
Go ahead. Yeah, I've got Director Dixon and then Director Bales.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a comment, I really want to thank, uh, the staff for bringing this forward. I think as an organization, as an entire organization, it is absolutely vital that we, we realize or unaware of this, what could be a potential, uh, problem for all of us. And, um, I will admit that, uh, I think that, um, it, I'll admit, I'm hoping that there another look can be taken at this one so that, uh, to prevent some future problems, because, uh, they, they aren't really very much fun. Thank you.
Speaking from experience, uh, Director Dixon, Director Bales, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I've looked at all these four in detail. And I, I really do believe that the staff can economize on a lot of items on, on the costs as far as things like Elbow Creek. They don't need to be making as many, uh, uh, trips to the, to view the creek, uh, or special trips to view the creek. They can just economize by doing it. When they do the sewer reviews and things like that, it's very close to there. And I just, I just think that there's a lot of economizing that can be done. And a lot of the big increases that were proposed supposedly were because it was at zero for four years prior, um, to, in the last term, so. But I think in, in the current state of, of the economy for all residents, big increases are hard to sustain for a lot of people. And they're already seeing tough times. And I just don't think that this is the time to be having huge increases. And I think there's still a lot of economizing on all these line items.
Uh, thank you.
I've discussed that with staff as well.
Yeah, and, uh, thank you, Director Bales, and I appreciate your, uh, comments. And obviously I empathize with, uh, the comments that, you know, in a tough year for people, facing a, a large percentage tax increase is probably not ideal. But facing a total failure where they can't flush their toilet or, uh, turn their tap on is also, uh, just as undesirable. So, um, I'm glad that you and staff are going to look into this. I'm glad we've got professional staff that we trust to look at the operations of, uh, of, uh, our, uh, our region. And, um, I hope, uh, some compromise is found.
Davidson?
Go ahead, Director Davidson.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, through to staff, I'm just wanting to give a comment on when you're planning for these, um, reserves and future upgrades and replacements, uh, how much does, does grants factor into that planning? And the reason I ask is that it just strikes me that I'm not aware of, of infrastructure in the electoral areas at any rate that got created without a grant. And a lot of the grant applications seem to have wording in them that says it's good for creating new infrastructure and also for replacing, um, old decrepit infrastructure. So it's kind of a wild card in my mind, and I'm just wondering how that sort of factors into how staff looks at these kinds of numbers.
Hello? Hello?
Hi, Director Hamilton. Director Hamilton, I'm just gonna, there you go. Perfect. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Lowesboro.
Okay, thank you. Um, through the chair to Director Davidson, um, you, you are correct. We have, we have work to do on, on how we do our capital asset planning and as it pertains to the use of grant funding. We do have a lot of the, um, Community Works funds that we do do, but we're looking to make sure that we have a more regimented plan going forward. I can say that, you know, this isn't a, a unique problem to the FBRD. I think, um, throughout North America, there's a lot of government grants that are given for the build out of new infrastructure. But it's the maintenance and the operations quite often are not covered by the grants. But I can say that where, where there are opportunities to, to do repairs, um, using grant funding, um, we do look at that. But I think for community works funding, we, we have some work to do on making sure it's planned at the outset of the year, uh, rather than as required.
If I may just jump in, Mr. Chair, um, I think that the board will recall, uh, in the, in past months, we've had some discussion about, um, being very cautious about applying for grant opportunities and making sure that we have full, um, business cases attached to it so that we fully understand, uh, what the actual costs are of taking on, uh, these grants, uh, funds. Because typically it's for capital and not for the operating, as Ms. Lowesboro said. And, uh, what can sometimes happen is that we're, um, taking on a free load of bricks, so.
Thank you, Ms. Kinnaman. I think, uh, you know, and optimistically, you know, if, uh, if we were saying that for some of these water systems or sewage systems that we would pay a third of the share of, of replacement, you know, then that should be maybe the minimum of, uh, of what we start to, uh, start to plan for. But of course, as we've seen with some of our other infrastructure needs, counting on, um, grant money before it's in our bank account is, uh, is a risk that I'm not sure everybody has the, uh, the stomach for. But, uh, it's a, it is, it's a good point. And I mean, optimistically, if we're getting a, um, if we're responsible for a third or, or half, I mean, that at minimum, we should be planning for, uh, for our portion. I don't see any other comments. So let's move to the next item.
Okay, thank you, Chair Lam. All right, so now we're going to get into the, uh, the specific service area budgets. Um, and I'm going to pass it over to, uh, my colleague, Kristi Hodson, um, Manager of Financial Operations, to, to kick us off with the Service Area 101, the Regional Services Administration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the 101 budget is dedicated to the Regional Board, the CEO's Office, and the Corporate Admin. It also includes a dedicated legal budget. Um, one of the challenges with this budget is, um, budgeting for unanticipated consultant and contracting work. For example, um, in the last year, we used funds for a CAO search as well as a CFO search. As you'll see, um, there's minimal increases. The increases going forward are purely driven by, um, inflation in staffing increases. Um, so if there's any questions, I can take them at this time.
Thank you. Don't, uh, hear any? Yeah, I don't see any, so let's move ahead.
Um, thank you. Um, the regional grant in Aids, we are actually going to, um, move these, recommend that we remove these, move these to the closed, closed session as this, uh, there includes a new service. So.
Yeah, uh, do you need, I, I don't know that we need a motion for that, but that makes sense. If we're talking about a new service or procuring a new service, I would, uh, let's move that to closed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, the next presentation is, um, by Ms. Gresham, um, for the Indigenous Relations Committee, and that's representing, uh, Budget Number 106. Thank you.
Very good.
Good afternoon, Directors, and through you, Mr. Chair, next slide, please. This budget supports the work of the Regional Indigenous Relations Committee and, uh, of which some board members are members of. And the thrust of this committee is to foster meaningful, respectful and cooperative relationships with our indigenous communities in the spirit of truth and reconciliation and, um, the, the latest, uh, legislation in, in British Columbia in particular, and of course, um, the UN Declaration. Of course, we have a member sitting at, uh, two treaty tables at the moment. Uh, as members of the Provincial Negotiating Team, we sit as well on the Metro Vancouver Indigenous Relations Committee. And this committee supports the, um, future development of four proposed subregional intergovernmental working groups in partnership with, uh, indigenous governments across the region. And this is one of the biggest projects on the, uh, 2021 work plan. There would be policy work, um, that we would attend to over the course of time through committee. And we are participating, um, as advisors to the board regarding, uh, indigenous relations matters, currency, the law, that type of thing. Next slide, please. Uh, this, this budget for 2021 as well, uh, comes in with a very healthy surplus, as you will see. So we are able to use, um, appropriated surplus to offset, uh, contract recoveries, uh, for our members. This budget supports stipends and expenses to our treaty table representatives, of course, staff, uh, largely supported by this budget and legal and consulting services, which are a bit of an unknown, but always needed to be budgeted for. Next slide, please. And in terms of challenges, uh, building relationships with indigenous communities, uh, not only takes time, but it has been very challenging in, in the face of COVID because these relationships are best built, um, face to face. We have been able to make some inroads, uh, in 2020, and we will continue to do so. Uh, the, the First Nations, uh, governments are also challenged similarly. Uh, in terms of risks, uh, of course, we do want to see representation at these provincial treaty tables so that we can bring local government interest to the table. Of course, diminished opportunities for engagement and relationship building. And it's going to be very important that we have, um, the capacity to undertake some very critical policy work as, um, the Declaration, um, of the Rights of Indigenous People Act needs to be implemented. And that's, um, something that is still a bit of an unknown in terms of the implications to local government. Next slide, please. So, uh, in terms of taxation impact, you will be seeing decreases over the course of the, um, in 2021 certainly, uh, through the use of those, um, surplus funds. And we, we've very modestly increased in, uh, over the course of the five-year term. Next slide. So in terms of projects, we will continue to sit at, uh, the SXTA and KT Treaty Tables. We sit at the Metro Vancouver Indigenous Relations Committee. We'd like to see ourselves have a seat at UBCM's table. Metro Vancouver is represented there, but we are a very different type of a region. And we would like to see ourselves sitting at that committee, given the 30-odd First Nations in our region. We think it would be very important for us to be sitting at that, that committee at UBCM. Um, we need to, of course, support the development of the, these three, four working groups that were identified, uh, in the terms of reference for this particular committee. All the policy work I spoke about and the relationship building, the strategic engagement, you're going to see reporting out very shortly to the board from the, from the province on some proposed reconciliation agreements. And certainly there's opportunities for servicing agreements and many, many one-offs that come to us, uh, on an ad hoc basis. Next slide, please. So this budget doesn't really have a requirement to build reserve funds, but we certainly do have a robust surplus of almost $80,000 that you will see spread out over the course of, of the five-year plan. Next slide, please. Financial summary, uh, would leave us at the end of five years still having a $61,000 surplus, uh, despite the use of, of the surplus over time. And go there, and a last slide, please. In terms of other considerations, again, we do need to see what the impact of Bill 41 is going to be on local government and assess any required implementation measures. As we have reported out through, uh, Director Davidson recently, we may be looking at the establishment of a new service in area F to coincide with an issue that's currently under discussion at the KT Table, so garbage-related issue. You will be fully briefed on that, um, at the committee of the whole in February. And of course, in due course, there will be land selection issues, not only for treaty settlement land. And of course, in due course, there will be land selection issues, not only for treaty settlement land, but also through these reconciliation agreements and interim treaty-related agreements that are currently under negotiation. Thank you.
Any questions on this one?
Dixon.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the update, Ms. Gresham. I guess my question is, I think I'm on this committee or or the FERD portion of it anyway. And it's something that we often don't meet about or for a variety of reasons, I guess. Are are the meetings at the treaty table still happening? Like, I guess I'm not really sure what what's really happening with this at this point.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we are meeting on a very regular basis at the treaty table, two days a month typically at each KTC and SXTA. Now, you will be getting that full report coming to you in February in committee of the whole, actually. And we will be convening the first meeting of the year of the Indigenous Relations Committee probably in early February to kick things off, elect the new chair, do some of those procedural issues. So you will be getting a full sum report out again and and make a determination as to how often you want to to meet. Right now, it is at the call of the chair, largely depending on table activity and other activity as outlined in this budget presentation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move to the next budget.
Thank you, Chairlam. The next budget will be presented by Mr. Yatter Wong. Thank you.
Good afternoon, directors, and good afternoon to this year. Thank you for your time. My name is Yatter Wong. I'm the manager of IT, FDM, and GIS FERD. Budget 247 is the regional fire dispatch is for the ongoing maintenance and operation of the FERD radio infrastructure. Additionally, it covers ECOM yearly contractual fees for providing fire dispatch services on behalf of the FERD. We have three target goals in mind. To increase the level of signal reception and transmission to both Chilliwatt River Valley and Harrison, to install the backup line of communication for CRV, also known as AMARDI, and to also negotiate a yearly contract for preventive maintenance to our existing radio infrastructure. Next slide. We have some challenges that we're facing, and we have some risks. So some of the challenges are, we are facing challenges in providing adequate radio signal to both CRV and Harrison. That's a known fact. Additionally, CRV is currently operating without a backup form of communication to the dispatch center located in Vancouver. There are some risks. Some high-level risk to be worth mentioning. Low to no radio signal reception to some areas of CRV and Harrison. Once again, CRV is operating without a secondary method of communication to and from ECOM. This does not adhere to best practices as laid out by the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association. Also, it can cause delay or no response to emergency events by our firehose due to the lack or complete loss of communication. Lastly, but very importantly, is a lack of pre PM or preventive maintenance checks to the radio infrastructure impacts our visibility to the operation of our equipment. Next slide. This is for the taxation impact. As you can clearly see, 2021 has an increase of $274,000. And I do appreciate that the cost is 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 jumped up. However, that includes the aforementioned plans to enhance the radio coverage and to deal in faith with the challenges that we're facing. It also includes a 4% contractual yearly increases by ECOM. And that is already laid out in our existing FERD and ECOM contract for services. Year 2022 to 2025 goes back to a more regular rhythm, sustaining ongoing budgeted items such as ECOM fees, equipment maintenance, and repairs. Next slide, please. The initiative project initiative, this is the meat of the of the plan. Fire dispatch department, FDM, working in conjunction with radio engineering firm, radio technical professionals, and ECOM have discovered some technical challenges which, once dealt with, will overall improve radio signal reception throughout the area that we service. The key item of the plans are a CBC tower structure study, Chilliwatt River Valley radio coverage enhancement, Chilliwatt River Valley backup channel or the secondary method of communication, a Harrison drop channel, also known as a repeater. And finally, but very importantly, the preventive maintenance plan on our existing radio infrastructure. Next slide. The radio coverage improvements for CRV and Harrison. So the this is where it breaks down into the cost. The once, once again, we have to install a mobile radio telephone interconnect, also known as AMARDI. What that is, is a secondary method of communication not available at this time for CRV to operate. Also, the other part is to improve the CRV radio signal reception at around $30,000. The Village of Harrison drop channel or the repeater that will, again, enhance the radio coverage. And lastly, the CBC tower structure study that needs to be done. Next slide. This is the preventive maintenance. It is very important for us to provide maintenance to the system, just like a new car. You buy, you have to still take it for warranty or checkup. So FDM is proposing to create and establish and a scheduled maintenance plan for our radio infrastructure. The PM or preventive maintenance will ensure the our radio equipment is working as per design and specification with full operability with ECOM fire dispatch and to proactively and very importantly, repair issues before any are found. So basically not a wait and fix approach. Proactively do the repairs and get get it done. Next slide, please. This is where we're talking about the the monetary and the financial implications for reserves. We have 37,500 surplus. We have zero. Next slide, please. And this is the last slide. This is the five-year projected budgeted plan. As you can see in year 2021, that that's the cost is 74,000 on average, more than what it has been in the past due to the plans that I previously discussed. The next 2022 to 2025, that includes a 4% yearly contractual fees increase that needs to be paid to ECOM in addition to the $60,000 steady cost to provide maintenance to our existing infrastructure. And at this point, I'm done with my slide. If I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Director Engar.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. This is the first I've heard of anything affecting our Chilliwatt River Valley, so it's all new to me. I'd like to have a little more information follow-up, if I could, please, on cell towers, how it's going to look on the ground and impacts to community. And anything you can pass along would be much appreciated, as I'm sure I'll be getting lots of questions as this this proceeds. Also, one thing I'd throw at you initially, without taking too much time here, is tell us is just an expansion project to the upper end of my Chilliwatt River Valley post-Creek area. And I would assume that if they can piggyback off anything we're doing, there may be a cost saving there in bringing them into the loop, but that's something that for a longer discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wong, and thank you, Chairlam. So the next, the next budget that we will talk about is the mosquito control, and we will ask Mr. Lance Lilly to present. Thank you.
Bet. Good afternoon, directors, and through the chair. Onto the next slide, please. Purpose of this program is to monitor and treat floodwater mosquito larvae so that they can be reduced down to tolerable levels each year. One of the key features of this particular budget I'd like to point out, and it's going to come up in another slide, is that 2021 is the final year of a series of 15% per year increases in this budget. This this was started back in 2013 and is needed to restore the budget to a level where it is no longer being annually subsidized by its surplus. Next slide. There are significant challenges associated with this budget. Most significant is the annual variation we see in the level of treatment needed year to year. It does vary considerably based on the height of the river and the duration of the flood each year. And so the level of treatment can range substantially, kind of kind of like snow removal. We budget based on recent trends with the expectation that the the bad years balance out the good years. What we're seeing, though, is that there's been a more frequent bad years lately. The river level seems to be changing, whether that's due to climate change or other conditions, we're not sure. One of the risks we have is that the surplus has been completely used up, so we are currently at zero, which is a concern going into a year because we we often need the surplus to pay for the additional treatments needed in bad years like we did this year. Next slide, please. This shows the 15% increase. And again, just to repeat, this trend for this, this has been a series of increases that's been occurring since 2013. And we are proposing that 2021 be the the last year of these additions. After this, 2022 to ongoing, we should be able to maintain it as just a moderate in increase every year. Next slide. There isn't significantly new projects, other than trying to find more efficiencies with regards to we're looking at the possible use of drones for monitoring, which could reduce helicopter use. But the real priority that we focus on is to try to focus on the ongoing activities and operations needed to fulfill the purpose of the program, which is on these floodwater mosquitoes. Next slide. As you can see, reserves are zero. This, just to be clear, this slide, we were anticipating to have around 51,000 in surplus at the end of 2020. Unfortunately, we had to utilize that for some extra treatments needed later this year. So that number is currently zero, plus we even had to borrow an additional $50,000 that is going to show up on next year's expenses. Next slide. And again, this shows the 15% increase between 2020 and 2021 for the member tax requisition. And this goes largely towards the two line items. Part of it is for the consultants, contractors. That's for the extra costs and treatment that we're seeing. And then to rebuild reserves. The surplus is important in this particular budget, just to help with those bad years that we do get. As I said earlier, this should be updated up to, it's actually zero at the end of 2020. With the budget as forecast moving forward, we will be able to replenish the reserves by 2025 up to around $350,000, we're hoping. Ideally, our reserves at this one sit at somewhere between 400,000 and 500,000 a year dollars. That's how much we need to pay for two to three years of bad years that we might see in a row. Next slide. COVID did create a few challenges for us this year, and I think we were able to get through it. We were able to 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 figure it out, and we're probably going to be facing similar situations this year. One of the things we're looking at doing this year, we're pre-ordering some of the larvicide. Last year, we had some concerns about whether or not we'd be able to bring up enough pesticides over the border. There were some delays in shipping, so we're just in case it turned out not to be a problem last year. And we're hoping it won't be this year. But just in case, we're pre-ordering as much as we can. And it is just too early at this point to predict what this year's freshet and mosquito conditions are going to be. Thank you. Any questions on that?
Thank you. Any questions through to Mr. Lilly? Okay, go ahead, Taryn.
Well, I have challenges with this budget. I'll admit it. So some of my concerns is when you write a comment in here, tolerance levels for any level of the mosquitoes seem to be going down. So if people phone and say, hey, there's mosquitoes in my yard, I don't like them, like, what's the process is? So that's one. And then when it says something about remote providing mosquito control, remote areas, needing to overspend the budget. So I guess it's the, what is the process around, you know, eradicating mosquitoes? I mean, is it every one of them? I mean, it's, is that realistic? Like, I think that's what I'm asking.
Mr. Lilly?
No, thank you. And through the chair. And we are not trying to, and we know we cannot eradicate mosquitoes. The entire purpose of the program is to reduce them down to what is considered tolerable, so that at least it doesn't affect people being able to enjoy their backyard or, you know, have coffee on a patio. The effectiveness of our treatment, we could, we can probably control around 85% of the mosquitoes in any one year. If if we're on top of it and can treat it, the problem is that remaining 15% can still cause some concern, especially in some of the low-lying areas around the Fraser River in particular. So we're not trying to eradicate, and we wouldn't be able to eradicate. We do know mosquitoes do have a place in the ecosystem. What we're trying to do is just make it more tolerable.
Okay, next, next budget.
Oh, I will continue. Okay, next slide. The purpose of our air quality program. This is to make continuous improvements in in ambient air quality in the region, and it's to use the air quality data to develop and collaborate on plans, actions, and policies that will reduce emissions, better understand the airshed, and raise awareness about this important matter. One of the features of this budget, similar to mosquitoes, this is the final year of a series of proposed increases. We've had 6% increases for the last three years, the last two years, I should say, in 2021. It's the last year. And this is because of extra costs that are going to be incurred starting in 2021, associated with a new contract for monitoring and data analysis that we have with Metro Vancouver. Next. Several challenges with air quality. One of the ones that I'll point out is there are there's always the potential for new and emerging policies or proposals that will cause a risk to our airshed, whether it's a point source pollution that might be coming up either in in our region or outside the region, but still in our airshed. We 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 need to be able to take action rapidly in order to protect our airshed in those cases. And that could involve legal costs. It could involve research, and some of those costs are unpredictable. But we need to be prepared. Next slide. And as mentioned earlier, just around 6% increase proposed for 2021, and then looking to to balance it out after that. That will help cover, that will cover off this extra cost that we're incurring. That will help cover, that will cover off this extra cost that we're incurring for the monitoring. Next slide. We're working on several new projects being proposed. We are, what, I won't bother getting into all of these. One of the significant ones though, and we're quite proud of this newer quality management plan, it's been drafted, we're still receiving comments on it and we're looking to finalize that over the next couple of months and then the rest of the year. Not only will be looking at beginning implementation of this new plan, but several other projects as well that'll help us better understand the airshed and where monitoring is needed and where emission sources are a concern. Next slide. As you can see, we do have a pretty significant surplus accumulated in this budget. I will point out that of this roughly 660,000, approximately 100,000 of it is funds that we've received through the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program, through the CARP program as part of gas tax refunds for the FERD. These are earmarked for greenhouse gas abatement projects or initiatives at a corporate level. The rest of the surplus, we do need funds for, as I mentioned before, in order to respond to these any threats that might come up. But the other aspect is necessary upgrades for equipment or the possible addition of a new monitoring station that may be added at some point in the near future. These can cost $300,000 to install a new monitoring station. We're currently undertaking some studies to figure out if there is gaps in the existing monitoring network. Next slide. This focuses on the, you can tell the increase proposed and then it balances off for the tax requisition. I will point out where it says provincial conditional grant. This is what I was referring to for these CARP funds that we get for the gas tax. We have this going down as an optimistic perspective that we are actually going to be making and we are making improvements in our own corporate emission footprint. And I think as it shows, most of those, sorry, air quality monitoring, most of that, that is what we pay for. Obviously, the monitoring and upkeep for our monitoring stations and that's where we've been seeing the increases. So that's where there was recent increases in the tax requisition goes towards. Next slide, please. And just wanted to point out, we do apply for the occasional, well, quite frequently we'll apply for provincial or federal grants that do come available for specific projects. But these are viewed as one offs and they're not used to pay for core operations for the program other than the Woodstove Exchange Program, which is operated out of this budget as well and paid for out of Ministry of Environment funding. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Any questions?
Dixon.
Go ahead, Director Dixon.
Thank you. So when I look at this and I see that, you know, the surplus is large, as you mentioned, and you mentioned some of the priorities around it. But it's pretty much the same size as the revenues. Like, did you consider instead of a 5.88% increase, maybe lowering the percentage increase this year? It's just, I, I do wonder about having such a, such a large surplus.
Go ahead, Mr. Lilly.
That is an option that could be considered if that's the direction we're given. We could make an adjustment to the budget to allow for it, but the challenge that that would have. If, if the budget was dropped down to a 2% budget rather than the 6% or 5.88, it would draw down the bud, draw down the surplus that we have over the next four years by approximately $100,000. That would just be a consideration to be made.
Mr. Lilly, you, you mentioned the contract with Metro Vancouver for the the operations of our air quality monitoring stations. We've, that contract, if I remember correctly, has been kind of outstanding for, for a little while. And we, is it safe to say we achieved a fairly considerable amount of savings over the years that we haven't seen any increases in the contract before renewing the, this new one recently?
I think that's fair to say, yes. What, we began the 6% per year increases prior to the initiation of the higher costs so that when those higher costs came in, we could, we were prepared for it without a big, you know, 20% increase in one year.
Okay, and not that I want to really hearken back to these days, but I do recall the days of our disagreements with with our neighbors over adding new point sources of pollution into the airshed. And would that, did I understand correctly that that money would come out of this budget, would come out of this surplus?
Historically, it has been, yes. So the understanding is that it would be coming out of this budget again if that issue reemerged.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. The next budget will be presented by Ms. Stewart, the Regional Strategic Planning and Initiatives Budget. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Good afternoon. I'm introducing the strategic planning budget. And the main area that we work within is administering the regional growth strategy, undertaking studies and initiatives of regional interest and other initiatives as directed by the board. The key highlights of the plan for this year is to move on completing the regional growth strategy update, which includes public engagement and approvals. And I think it's important to note that in this budget, our project costs are funded by surplus as opposed to acquisition. And that's been our approach for the last number of years. Next slide. The budget risks or challenges, unanticipated project requests outside of the budgeted work program. The nature of our work is that we, because there's ongoing legislation, there's ongoing issues that come up. We're often asked to, to look and assess impacts of these sorts of things. So something like that could impact our work program going forward. And then unanticipated delays due to COVID-19 response, which we have discussed earlier in relation to the regional growth strategy and just how do you do public engagement? And with indigenous communities, especially when there isn't that face to face opportunity for engagement. And there will be reports coming that's shortly to talk about that a bit more. Next slide. So in terms of increases, it's with most of our project costs paid from surplus, the increases are largely related to salary benefits and those aspects. The increase in 2022 is related to there will be a census into 2021, so this year. And there will be additional data that we will likely be purchasing in order to get more data. And what I understand is we will be getting data that will be looking at the impact of COVID on, on whole different aspects of, of some of the social data, which we will definitely be sharing with our member municipalities. Next slide. So projects and initiatives over the next year, we are looking at the social housing inventory update, which should be coming very, very soon. We are just waiting some review from our government partners. The regional growth strategy update, some follow up work on the homelessness survey. And participating in TransLink and Metro Vancouver planning processes, which are important to ensure that our interests are being protected, but they're also quite, can be quite time consuming in terms of responding to their policy and trying to understand what their objectives are. And also there is the MOTR, it's about a transportation plan process that will be coming up. And we are waiting for more information in terms of the terms of reference in that project. Next slide. So we do have a healthy surplus in, in this budget. We are pulling funds for project costs from the surplus. There are times where we have planned to use part of this surplus for projects, but then have been successful in getting gas tax funding in the outdoor recreation study was an example of that, where we initially thought we would do that using surplus funds, but we received a significant grant from, from senior governments. This gives an idea of where we're heading into 2025. And we will be, over time, using surplus for projects. And so these projects come up. We won't know ahead of time in terms of what types of projects we'll be looking at in 22 and 23. Those will likely, they may well be a reflection of some of the other projects that we work on will be sort of next steps in that work. Next slide. And the work program may also be adjusted in terms of what the board directions. Next slide.
Thank you. Any questions through to Ms. Stewart? Okay, let's move to the next budget.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stewart, and thank you, Chairlum. The next presentation will be made by Mr. Yatter Wong for Regional Services Combined E911.
Thank you. So budget 246 details the PSAP agreement between the FERD and ECOM. And just a quick overview, PSAP stands for the Public Safety Answering Point. Next slide, please. Currently, ECOM holds two agreements. Two agreements between FERD and ECOM. One of the PSAP agreements is for areas in Abitfair and the second agreement is for areas outside Abitfair. The current E91 call answer levy must increase by about minimum 4% in order to meet the PSAP cost that ECOM charged at the FERD. In the next two slides, I will provide the financial summary for the next five years. Next slide, please. Currently for reserve, we have zero and a surplus of 590,000. Next slide, please. This is something I want to bring to the board's attention is that if you notice, as you notice in the slide, in the next five years, the call answer levy seems to be taking a dip, it seems to be lowering. This is the result that the call answer levy that we're currently working with has not been updated for a few years. The current call answer levy is based on taxation of traditional landline telephone devices. And as we are aware, the market trend is to move forward to mobile devices and no longer are the traditional landlines the popular option. We will be working and getting this bylaw and bring it up, up to date. At this point, I'm open for questions.
Thank you. And I understand the UBCM is also working on some stuff with the provincial governor on the call answer levy, just the realization that you know, we need to modernize our, modernize here some of our revenue that's traditionally used to offset some of these, these expenses. So I don't think any, I'm not sure any headways we made on that, but thank you for bringing this to our attention. It is, it is going to be a challenge.
Thank you, Chair.
You, I don't hear any other questions. Next item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wong, and thank you, Chairlum. The next presentation is the Regional Solid Waste Management by Mr. Lance Lilly. Thank you.
Hey, the purpose of our budget 402 for regional solid waste is to maintain and implement the FERD's solid waste management plan and to achieve its diversion target of 90% across the region. I will point out that there is no tax requisition that goes into this budget. 100% of revenue comes from the user pay system based on the amount of garbage that's produced. There's a tonnage levy that we apply. It's roughly $2 a ton. I think it just went up to $2.35 a ton. And that in, there's been a, last year, we've introduced an increase in that tonnage levy of 35 cents per year, per ton, per year, over the next three years, four years in order to offset what we're expecting to be increased diversion associated with our recently adopted source separation bylaw that came into effect last April. Next slide. Key challenge associated here is that there is no guaranteed revenue and it's based on the amount of garbage, which can vary year to year. And there's a number of factors that can affect the number, the amount of garbage that is, is disposed of through our region. The and I put on here some of the COVID-19 impacts, delayed awareness associated with the source separation bylaw. We weren't able to do our big rah rah campaign for this when it came into effect. It's still being implemented, but we're looking, we are delaying this big awareness again until it's more appropriate to do so, kind of post state of emergency. With, with the waste varying and it goes ups and downs, when it goes down, it can be a good thing if it's from our increasing diversion. It does mean we have less revenue, but if waste goes up and that can happen as well, it does mean we have more revenue, but that can be a good thing for us because it gives us more revenue to be able to spend and invest more in the education and enforcement and implementation needed in order to bring that back down. So there's this sort of mechanism built in. Next slide. Many projects underway in this program largely just focused on the source separation bylaw came into effect last year, as I mentioned. We're making headway with regards to organic diversion. And we look to further increase those efforts this year. Next slide. We have approximately $250,000 in surplus in this account and this is a fairly rough estimation. We won't know final numbers until all the tonnage data gets reported and remitted to us. That data goes up until December 31, so it might be another few weeks before we can actually find out what this number is at. It could be as low as 200,000, it could be somewhere 300,000, but this is, this is our estimation. Next slide. Shows the tipping fee, it's actually the tonnage levy that is forecast. We do anticipate because the increase in tonnage levy is already taking place and we were factoring in a slight delay in effectiveness of our bylaw. We anticipate, you know, a slight increase in next year's revenue from this. But I need to emphasize, all those numbers are absolute estimations based on, on historical trends. We don't yet know and it can vary based on the economy and the US dollar and issues like COVID. So it's really hard to tell. I will say with regards to surplus, the surplus we have, it is needed because of the ability to absorb years where garbage is down in order to cover our operational costs and to absorb those, those years. Next slide. And under other considerations, again, I think this is a similar one to our air quality. Under other considerations, again, I think this is a similar one to our air quality program where we do apply for provincial or federal grants as they come up. And we often use those for individual projects, but they don't cover any of our core operations. And so it's, it's a bit of a challenge trying to keep the budget up, and they're not generally included in the budget. Thank you. I think that's the last slide.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly, and I'm glad you pointed out some of the potential risks on the horizon as we, yes, as our communities start to look at waste reduction policies. But also I point out the city of Chilliwack is just entertaining, they're moving towards a single-use plastic ban. So we're looking at implementing bans at point of sale for single-use plastics, foams, foam cup containers, takeout containers, those kind of things. So traditionally, those, those items, the single-use items end up back in the waste stream. And so we could see as, as the trend moves towards that, we can see less waste generation as well. Any other questions from? Go ahead, Director Wong.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Loi. I was struck by your comment that, and it makes sense, as we become more efficient and in terms of diverting waste, we have less going to the dump or wherever, and so our tipping fee revenue decreases. And, and so theoretically, the more conscious we become, the more efficient in diverting, the higher taxes theoretically would go to pay for operating costs. Unless you're going to tell me there's a concurrent reduction or in operating costs, or they become more efficient to lower our operating costs equivalently to keep the, the cost to the taxpayers relatively the same.
I will point out through the chair that there is no tax requisition that goes towards this. And because it's a user pay system, if you're producing less garbage, the individual consumer is going to be paying less.
Okay, fair enough. That's my, my mistake. Yes, of course, it's a user pay. But would not the same theoretical concern apply here, that the more efficient to become even, let's say, all became equally less polluting or less, or more efficient in terms of diverting waste, their cost would go up because the municipality, or sorry, the district's cost of operating would not go down at the same rate, or am I wrong?
I think you're right, but I'm not 100%.
It might be more of a risk there, Director Law, and on the, the owners of the municipal asset. So the city of Chilliwack that owns the Bailey landfill might inherit the risks, and the taxpayers in the city of Chilliwack might inherit those risks a little bit more. And we're also required to have landfill closure by legislation, landfill closure money set aside. And so when our revenue starts to drop, the landfill, that becomes, I think, a bigger challenge if it's relies solely on user fees. I think the FERD, for lack of a better term, is able to piggyback on top of our, on top of our, our municipal asset there. And, and that levy is charged in addition to the other tip fees that we would charge at, at the landfill. Is that, that correct? So it would be a risk. I understand what you're saying, but I think the risk would probably be borne by the taxpayers of the owner of the municipal asset.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Bales?
Go ahead, Director Bales.
Yeah, I see the garbage going in a kind of a negative direction. For instance, staying home a lot, but I see the delivery trucks going by all the time. So with delivery of groceries, food, whatever items from, it's more packaging, and I'm seeing that in other news as well. And just, oh, more people using plastic bags and masks being strewn all over the place. But I'm just seeing a real negative aspect partly largely due to COVID. And I don't know if that's going to reverse anytime soon because so many of the small businesses are being shut down. And businesses like Amazon are taking off, and that means a lot more packaging and a lot more recycling. So it's going to cost on taxes a lot more, I would think, overall, once the numbers start flying in. But that's just my uninformed observation is, and, and I noticed people are burning garbage. I mean, I can smell it in the air when people are burning plastic next door or wherever. And I'm hearing those kinds of complaints as well. So I think we really need to be cognizant because if, you know, if people are broke, they'll just burn their garbage, unfortunately, or toss it, which is another cost. That's about all I have to say, unless there's comments from staff about that.
Don't see any comments. Next item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lance Lilly. Then, presentation is the Better Campground by Ms. Trina Douglas. Thank you.
Next slide, please. The Better River Campground is a high-demand recreational service that is intended to fund the regional parks program long-term. COVID-19 brought challenges in 2020 as we learned to work around the restrictions with delayed opening and reduced capacity. Next slide, please. While COVID-19 may require some modified services at the campground in 2021, we expect we will be able to open at the start of the regular season with some, some shortages. In turn, we do expect that we will see increase in revenues in 2021 as compared to 2020. Next slide, please. We will continue to delay capital improvements until we can see a reduction in COVID-19 restrictions. We are working on low-cost improvements to increase available booking options at this time. Next slide, please. A reserve and surplus balances are minimal at this time as we are in the early stages of the operation. And we were continuing to do required improvements to the assets. Next slide, please. Through historical analysis, we've found ways to modify site type availability in order to optimize revenue. Next slide, please. Continued statistical evaluation will offer revenue optimization and support our strategic priorities. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions through to Ms. Douglas?
Yes, Director Engarp, please. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Just wondering, manage to operate at all, what, what things do you have in place to facilitate camping at this time?
So we, we, because our sites are very close together, we opened every second site in 2020. We had some, we did in stages, open different areas within our sites. We maintained restrictions on gathering. The staff there followed the COVID safety plan, there was signage, cleaning stations. It was, it was very popular, and, and our feedback from the public was, was quite positive on our management of the COVID situation.
Very good. Well, thanks. Thanks for your hard work to make things work at all. That's good.
Great, thank you, and I don't see any other questions, so thank you, Ms. Douglas.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we will move on to the subregional services portion of the presentation. The first presentation will be made by Ms. Christie Hodson for the 240 budget, the search and rescue budget. I'll point out that we have 13 more budgets to go before a brief conclusion and then moving into the closed portion.
So we're going to go the Trina Douglas speed for the rest of them is what you're saying.
I hope so. I think so. Okay, I'll certainly do my part here. So this search and area, or search and rescue budget is a service area that funds for search and rescue detachments. As you can see, it's just inflationary increases year over year, and that's been the case for the last several years. We have a minimal surplus balance just to absorb any fluctuations from year over year. And that's about it. If there's any questions.
Thank you, and don't hear any. Go ahead, Dennis.
I'm, I'm hearing from the search and rescue in hope that the fire department's actually attending the traffic accidents. So I guess it cuts into their budget. If they don't go out, they don't get money, right? I guess, right? So have we ever thought of increasing the amount of money we give to search and rescue? Because I know that they need it. They're always telling me they need more money.
Thank you. Through the chair, we're actually have it on our work plan to look further into the funding model for the search and rescue detachments. The funding that we provide them is just a portion of the funding that they do receive. So we have, we have no plan to decrease the funding based on, on accidents moving forward.
Yeah, I didn't mean decrease it. I meant there, I believe there, there a lot of money that they get from the province. Every time they go out, they, they get a bunch of money paid for the trip. And they're finding, they've been complaining to me that the other fire departments are getting jaws of life, like, you know, I think Yale's planning to do something with that. And I know Central Valley has one, and they're, they're not doing as many calls that it's complicated. Forget, thank you.
One to, it might be one to flag and, and.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Mercer.
First, I've got Director Pranger and then Director Mercer. Go ahead, Director Pranger.
I just want to emphasize that search and rescue in all of our areas does yeoman's job with not substantial funds. And many of the search and rescues, when they get a task number and they are allowed expenses, they re-contribute that back to search and rescue to their budget. So they're, they're volunteering, plus they're giving back whatever they have been entitled to collecting. I admire this service. They go out when, when none of us would want to go out.
Yeah, no, I think definitely highlights the importance of the, of the service and also some of the challenges when they're dealing with this, their provincial funding, our provincial counterparts. Director Mercer, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Ms. Director Pranger for those comments. And that just builds on my request to staff. If you're going to do a review, I'd be very much interested in but over a year-long period, how much of their expense money that they're entitled to, to buy a lunch? And I've heard the same stories too directly from the search and rescue people in this area, that most of them, they have kind of a gentle person's agreement, if you will, that they donate that money back to their equipment fund, which is absolutely wrong. And I'd be interested if we could actually dig a little deeper into that and monetize it. And how much time, some of our very skilled people who are trained in rope and clip rescue and whitewater rescue, cave rescue, and all of our teams in this area have those designations. And many search groups across the province don't have them, so they're being called elsewhere. I'd like to find out and understand how much of their time is spent fundraising as opposed to doing what they should be doing and what we want them to do. I'd be interested in that detail in the, in the review you're doing.
Excellent.
Yeah, let me just clarify. So as part of the review that staff are going to undertake on this funding, are we going to, is the plan to identify, I guess, some of those operational needs from SAR? I know this, this, the money that we get as a requisition here is just basically a grant, is that correct? Like, we just send it straight over to the respective SARS? So we're not that deep into their operational, the operational side of search and rescue. I just want to be a little bit careful here. And I want to try and figure out a way we can get some of that information to Director Mercer without tasking staff with another, kind of another whole plan here.
Thank you through the chair. That's great. To clarify, we, we don't have a full understanding of what their operations are, and I don't believe that our study would include any of the information that has been discussed so far. We just want to understand our contractual obligations to search and rescue on the amount that we should be contributing to them. It is purely a grant, and we're not involved in their, in their operations at this point.
But I, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I get that, but we have a more responsibility to fund them for the job that they're, they're supposed to be doing. And we remain probably their best and only advocates with the provincial government in these provincial areas. So if I can't, if I don't have the information, I can't advocate for them, which I'm prepared to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just one sec. I'm just going to ask staff. I'm just wondering, in this review, if we can mark down a Director Mercer's questions that he had. And as we're, I mean, I know our review is going to take, is obviously going to have some interaction with the respective SARS that we provide grants to. And so maybe they've been a better position to be able to deliver this information back to us in terms of questions that have been raised here. So I do think it's important to get some of those questions answered, so we can get an idea from them, you know, how much time they're spending, what their, what, what their overheads are, what their, their meal budgets are. And if, in fact, they're going back into cap, capital equipment replacement and that kind of thing. So if we could mark those, take note of those questions and just pass them on to SAR, so we can get them back to, to the board, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Director Pranger, go ahead.
Further to Director Mercer, I do believe we are their, their best advocates, and we need to advocate for them. There's people like Neil Brewer from the Kent Harrison Search and Rescue who would have most of those kinds of answers on the tip of their tongue as well as the other heads of the search and rescues in our, in our region. I think that information would be readily available. Thank you.
Yep, that's great, and I think it's probably, you know, a two-pronged approach. As Director Mercer said, you know, if there is a funding requirement there, and we certainly know the great work that SAR is doing, and it's undisputable. But for us to maybe team up and to act as an advocate to, in order for them to get some, I guess, maybe a better foothold with the provincial government in terms of funding, I think that's also a worthy endeavor.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in and ask for some clarification from the board. What has been discussed here amongst a few of you amounts to an unplanned project for 2021. We're absolutely able to accommodate that within the existing staff complement. But, you know, it would be helpful if we just understood that this was direction from the board to undertake what would amount to a new initiative for a department that wouldn't normally be taking, undertaking this work.
Mr. Chair, I could help with that if you like. We'll do it offline.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is maybe some early investigative work before we undertake a full project, unplanned project. Some early investigative work could be, could be done. And then perhaps clarifying what some of the questions are. And then if it looks like we're going to head into more of an unplanned work territory, we can bring a motion back to the board.
Thank you.
With the staff recommendation.
Thank you.
And I'll leave Director Mercer and yourself and to discuss, Director Adipson, go ahead.
I, I thought they just told us they were going to be doing this later in the year. So I don't see it as, as a new work. They, they just told us.
What I, what I clarified from staff, that some of this was going to be done, but some of it was outside of the scope. Director Facio?
Thank you, Mr. I'll, I'll be very quick because we're running out of time here. But does the regional district, when they have applications for grants, do they request a financial statement which outlines But does the regional district, when they, they have applications for grants in aid, do they request a financial statement which outlines all the details of what that particular association is doing?
I believe in our grants and aid policy requires that. But I don't know that this is a, one of the grant and aid. It's a, just a standing kind of requisition for a, a service. But maybe staff could help me out on this one.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you through the chair to Director Fazio. We want to make sure that we are meeting our contractual obligations and we want to look into whether or not there are any reporting requirements part of the, the agreement with the search and rescue. So we will be able to research that and report back.
Great. And Director Bales, go ahead.
Yeah, through to Director Mercer, if you're doing a little bit of offline research with the group, could you ask them if they would like or what it would cost for infrared? Recently on the news, I was noticing that the, I, I don't know if it was Vancouver or North Vancouver Search and Rescue. They were out testing their new equipment and found some people who were lost that, that they didn't know were lost. So it turned out to be a real good investment without having to, almost immediately. So I'd be interested in finding out about that.
I will. I believe our teams have access to that, but I will. Thanks.
And I'm going to steer us back onto the budget here. Last word. Go ahead, Dennis, quickly.
I, I think this is where we got a lobby to get that a tax on the, on the cell phones and some of that should go to the search and rescue. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, let's move to the next item.
Okay, thank you. The next item is animal control by Ms. Trina Douglas.
Very well that. Next slide, please. This subregional service area includes response to a full complement of animal control services. This includes 24-hour emergency response to issues posing an imminent threat to public safety. So high-demand essential service focused on public safety, animal welfare nuisance issues. Next slide, please. As reflected in the budget, the cost for contracted services has increased. Recruitment and retention challenges have been exacerbated by COVID-19. In the spring of 2021, we will issue a new RFP for service provision and will report back to the board when we have these results. First Nations community requests continue to come forward, some for full service, others requesting one-time service for public safety concerns in their community. We'll bring options to the board for consideration once we've evaluated our service needs and the cost implications of service provision. Next slide, please. The tax, taxation impacted 255 is a result of increased costs of overhead and contracted services. Next slide, please. We're continuing to evaluate cost recovery options that will be included in proposed amendments to the bylaw. We look forward to bringing those proposed amendments forward in 2021. Next slide, please. From our reserves, we have planning for two vehicle replacements in future years. Our surplus balance is available to fund legal fees and will also help to offset potential cost increases to service provision as we move forward through the RFP process. We've not allocated any funds to reserves in 2021 or 2022 in order to help offset the increased tax requisition through these budget years. Next slide, please. This is the five-year financial plan summary. As you can see, dog licensing is a primary source of funding for the service. Next slide, please. As discussed, we will be reviewing our bylaws and service provision options in 2021 to ensure we're able to support our strategic priorities. We'll be bringing these forward to the board in 2021 as we gain further information. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, let's move to the next item.
Thank you. The next item will be the Regional District Air Park by Ms. Bugtavine. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Area 301, which is also known as the Regional Air Park. Purpose of the air park in Hope is operated as well as the emergency landing strip up in Boston Bar. In this, this has been an interesting budget due to COVID-19. There are fuel and rental revenues which are down and then some increased costs in other areas as it pertains to COVID-19 cleaning, et cetera. Next slide, please. There are some risks and challenges. Again, COVID-19 has a huge implication. The reserve funds in this particular budget are not sufficient to meet future needs, including asset replacement. And there have been regular requests for rent relief, which have been coming through. So the taxation really needs to increase to reflect increasing operating and maintenance costs in this area. Next slide, please. Here's the projected reserves and surplus balances at the end of December 2020, which you can see in front of you. Next slide, please. There are a number of projects which are planned for 2021 and these are all listed in front of you. These are all on the, they need to be done list, life cycling, that type of thing. Next slide, please. So the tax requisition jumps $20,000 from 2020 to 2021. There is some drawing from reserves and from surplus to facilitate some of these projects. And as you can see on the bottom, over time, the surplus is drawn down and the reserves are drawing down as well. So that will need to be looked at in future years. Next slide, please. So there's a taxation impact that you see in front of you. This area for, for Hope and Area B, which pays into this service as well as Area A. Next slide, please. So there will be future strategic planning as one of the plans for this air park in terms of what is needed, when do we need it, how do we need it, what does the community want or need? It's a high priority. Aligning the asset management with reserve requirements is a, is a significant undertaking. The fuel pricing and lease agreement process also is something that will be under review in the next while to ensure that it is moving in the right direction. Next slide, please. That is it as it pertains to the Regional Air Park. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Director Adamson.
We haven't have really planning. COVID's really slowed us down. But I, I was talking to citizens in Hope and we were talking about doing a, we want to do a garden there, community garden there at the end. Is there any plans on looking at that over the winter?
Not specifically for the community garden. However, we will continue. I know that that's a concern for you, Director Adamson, and certainly that's come up. So perhaps we can chat about that sort of offline here as it pertains, yeah, to what we can possibly look at there. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Bugtavine. Any other questions? Okay, next item.
Thank you. The next three presentations are by Ms. Allison Stewart regarding our transit services.
Good afternoon. Just for the, these next three budgets, I just want to let you know that the, the budget information, especially pertaining to the safe restart funding came in sort of late in this process. So the budgets reflect the transit-specific safe restart funding. But some of the budget, the, the presentation text doesn't necessarily reflect that. So I will be speaking to that through the presentation, but I just want to make sure that the budget numbers definitely incorporate the safe restart numbers. Next slide. So Service Area 306, that's the Agassi Harrison Service, serving City of Chilliwack, District of Kent, Area D, and Harrison Hot Springs. The highlights of the plan, it takes into account the lower revenues and ridership due to COVID-19 and takes into account new transit operating agreement between BC Transit and the transit operator. Next slide. In terms of budget risks and challenges, we have, we will be utilizing the surplus from prior years to offset revenue losses due to COVID-19 where necessary and utilizing surplus from prior years to offset the increased costs related to the new transit operating agreement between BC Transit and the transit operator. But then on, on top of that, we have the, the COVID-19 fears. And we don't necessarily know how long some of the restrictions may last in terms of capacity and that sort of thing. So the timing, hopefully by the third quarter of 2021, things will get much closer to normal. We do have updated information in terms of the, the, the additional funding from senior governments, and I'll touch on that just a little bit later. Next. So this is the taxation impact over time. And again, we are, we are already using the surplus to, or reserves to offset some of these other costs. Next slide. And we will continue to explore the connection between Agassi and Mission. And I think there was some, some discussion at the board just before Christmas in terms of the interest in, in pursuing that in the next few years. Next slide. The surplus is just over $200,000. And that comes from, partly comes from the, the safe restart funding. And also there was a fairly significant, there was a, a fair or a lease, bus leasing holiday which essentially reduced the cost of the leases for the buses by half of the year. So that created room to add to the budget and allows us flexibility to take into account if it takes a little longer than we hope to get revenues back, back on, on track. Next slide. And this gives you an idea of the next number of years and shows just how the, the surplus or the, the surplus is being used over time to offset the challenges that we've had over the last few years. Next slide. So in terms of the other considerations, and this is where I can fill you in a little bit more information. The safe restart funding, which is monies from the province and the federal government is fairly substantial and it's spread over the two, the current 2020 to 2021 fiscal year and the 2021, 22 fiscal years of BC Transit. And the amount for the Agassi Harrison service is just under $110,000. So this really helps support the, we were roughly 50% low on revenue. And this replaces that. And it's based on, the, the, the funding was essentially based on 2019 actual revenues and which was good because we had good, good revenues in 2019. So this will really provide support for the service over the next few years as the recovery goes forward. The, the bus leasing fee holiday added an additional about approximately $40,000 reduction in our cost. So that again goes, can go forward to support some of the, the challenges going forward. Any questions? I think that's it.
Few questions on this subregional service? Don't see any. Let's go to the next item.
So next slide, please. So this is the Fraser Valley Express. We're all familiar with that. And we do have a planned expansion for hopefully January 2022. The province will still need to allocate funding in their 2021 budget coming up. But we're confident that the province sees transportation issues in the lower mainland as a key element that they want to address. This budget takes into account the lower revenues and ridership due to COVID-19. And it also takes into account the, the new transit operating agreement between BC Transit and the operators. Next slide. So the, the budget risks and challenges, you know, as it is with all of these budgets, it's the COVID-19 is, has been a major impact for 2022 to 2024 as directed by the board. Last year in 20, the 2020 budget was to use the surplus to smooth potential requisition, requisition increases related to the expansion once implemented. Lower ridership obviously has, and reduced bus capacity has reduced our, our revenues. But when there will be full recovery is still uncertain. So sort of keeping not spending all of the, the surplus, we do need to make sure that we're in a position of being able to handle sort of lower revenues for, for another year or so. It's just unclear the pace of recovery. But we have received more details in terms of the, the, the safe restart funding. And I'll touch on that just a little bit later. Next slide. So as you can see, the increases from 2023 and 2024 and 25 really reflect the expansion where we're essentially expanding one-third again of the level of service that we currently have. The expansion, when we, when we went forward with it, we did have fairly conservative revenue expectations. So by 20, by the end of 2022, we'll hopefully have a better understanding of just what the revenues are going to be like. And so over time, it would be great if we would be able to reduce the increases in later years. But it really will depend what the revenues, what the ridership will be and what the revenues will be as a result of the expansion. So as you say, the expansion was delayed and deferred, but they have, the province has indicated an interest in, in, in at least addressing or, or pushing this forward for next January. But we won't know likely until the April. I think it's going, the budget's going to be April. So we won't know until then whether the expansion is actually going to happen. Next slide. So there, there is a fairly significant surplus and that, a large part of that is from the safe restart funding. And again, we will be using that surplus to, to smooth the increase in requisition over time in the future. Next slide. And this gives you a bit of an idea of just where the, where we're bringing in the reserves to offset these increases over time. The, the, the safe restart funding and these other provincial federal government supports have been really quite significant, especially on the Fraser Valley Express. It's, it's a high-revenue service. So we really have benefited from this additional funding and it will help smooth things out as we recover in the future. Next slide. And in terms of the details of the safe restart funding for the Fraser Valley Express, it's just over, it's $1,35,000 split over the current 2021 fiscal and the future 21, 22 fiscals. So this offsets local government costs for the COVID response and also our drop in revenues, which were approximately 50%. And again, there was a similar local government reduction of the bus lease fees as well from July to December of last year. Any questions?
On the FBX, go ahead, Director Blue.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Ms. Stewart, for your presentation. Disappointing but understandable that the Carvilles to Low Heat has been delayed some. I'm really interested in how we keep the pressure up to make sure that what the provincial government has indicated is an interest of theirs actually does get put into the budget announcement when it comes out. I think this is a really essential service, especially as we start to, to rebuild the economy. And this transportation link, I think, will be one of the best ways that we can do it. So just interested in anything that we can do to help to keep that pressure on.
Yes, certainly. When we were talking to BC Transit, we, you know, expressed that, that the board definitely wants to move forward as, as directed in December. And I think when you look at some of the ministerial mandate. And I think when you look at some of the ministerial mandate letters, this is a very strong focus on the Fraser Valley and transportation. So we're hoping that that will certainly be reflected in the budget. But I'm sure, you know, talking to your colleagues at different political levels, when you have a chance, could also help as well. But we're certainly at the staff level, we we're definitely pushing to have this expansion take place.
Thank you. And if I could just add, Mr. Chair, I think the thing that about this for me that's really important that's that stands out is that it's something that's possible to do right now with relatively low budgets versus freeway expansion or, you know, lots of other things that are huge infrastructure projects that take a really long time. And this connecting our region to to the rest of Metro and and all of the the places that people need to go every day is going to be so critical. So just thanks for your work on this. I really appreciate it. And we'll do what we can to keep the pressure on. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Director Pryor.
Just an idea that maybe when we have our meetings with Minister Josie Osborne when on our telephone conference calls that that might be an issue that is raised.
Yep, it's a great, it's a great suggestion. And I know in the briefing notes to our new M L A's identifying the Fraser Valley Express and also the the potential service expansion on the north side are both key kind of pieces of information that will brief them on.
Thank you.
And go ahead, Ms. Stewart, for the next item.
So next slide. So the the Hope Transit Service, which provides a transit service between Hope, along Highway seven between Hope and Agassi. It incorporates a new transit service to Excitium nine, which is a Yale First Nation Reserve near Ruby Creek. And that was really an exciting addition, which also adds revenue to the service. It takes into account lower revenues and ridership due to COVID nineteen. And it does take into account new Transit Operating Agreement between B C Transit and the Transit Operator. Next slide. So we are utilizing, in terms of that budget risks and challenges, we are utilizing surplus from prior years to offset revenue losses due to COVID nineteen where necessary. The lower ridership due to COVID fears and reduced bus capacity adds some uncertain uncertainty, though, though there has been increased bus capacity, but it's not yet at the full level. There were increased costs related to the new Transit Operating Agreement. And but we do have more certainty with respect to the COVID nineteen Safe Restart Funding, which does has provided additional funding to the service. Next slide. So this is the taxation impact over the next few years. And and the the addition of additional First Nations communities definitely adds support to the service. And I know that certainly revenues have benefited from these connections. And so there's been, and as there have been, certainly what we're hearing from the communities is that it really has made a big difference to to their, to the communities from an economic and social perspective. And so we see that continuing over time and next slide. And it is still a fairly limited service. So we are, there is ongoing monitoring of ridership and capacity. And and over time, you know, as COVID sort of goes, sort of goes into the darker, our memory, looking at where improvements over time may happen. But at this point, it really is, we're still building on the on the on the the service from from start and moving up. Surplus is about sixty, just over sixty thousand dollars. And again, we're using that to offset our revenue challenges. Next slide. And this is is an indication of of how we're using the reserves and the provincial conditional grants. And and one thing to consider is that these revenue supports for the senior governments were reflected in the provincial conditional grants. Next slide. So there was the addition of Yale First Nation. And then the Safe Restart Funding for B C Transit on on the the Hope Service, it was just over twenty one thousand over the two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty one and the future twenty twenty one, twenty two B C Transit Fiscals. So that essentially replaces about fifty percent of the the lost revenues and also benefited again from the relief of the bus lease fees from July to December. And that's that.
Hey, any questions on that service area? Don't see any. And I'm gonna note that we're about sixteen minutes over what no, we were going to keep you for. And we've still got quite a ways to go here. So we'll move through these next presentations quickly.
Okay, thank you. And the next presentation will be by Mr. Lance Lilly for the Invasive Weed Control Budget.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, the the focus of this program is on monitoring, containing and reducing the prevalence of priority invasive weed species, mostly along road sides within the participating area. The tax requisition does remain relatively low. Approximately twenty percent of the budget comes from contributions, annual contributions we get from the province year to year. Next slide. There is a lot of weeds out there. And one of our challenges is to prioritize both what can be done with the program as well as where it goes. So we do prioritize, there's four species that we prioritize. All all are listed as provincially noxious weeds. And these were prioritized for their impacts on either the agricultural sector, on infrastructure with knotweed, for example, or giant hogweed that has human health impacts. From a risk perspective, as I mentioned, we do rely on annual provincial grants. And I will point out that even though this has been a consistent source of funding in the past, there is no guarantees moving forward. And we still have not heard and they they don't anticipate to even tell us whether or not we have the grants for two thousand and twenty one until March. And so there is a bit of uncertainty moving forward. Next slide.
Adamson.
Go ahead, Director Adamson.
Weeds along the highways, isn't that the provincial responsibility? So are they doing something as well?
Correct, they are. They have their own contract, their own contractors that work along Highway one and along the provincial highways.
What about Ladlaw?
If it's a provincial highway, it would fall under the provincial responsibility.
Okay, thanks.
The budget increase, we're asking for, or we're proposing three percent increases. Most of these increases go towards covering salaries and overhead with a little bit of increases for extra treatments, usually just possible extra costs associated with higher fuel or labor for our contractors. Next slide. We really do, there's an important aspect to the program is to, once you begin treating an area, it's important to keep treating it until it's eradicated from that site. If you move on too quick, it does, you lose that investment that you already made in there. And sometimes it can come back with with a vengeance. So we do really place an onus on returning to the sites and monitoring for for any possible regrowth. And going into two thousand and twenty one, it'll be the second year that we've partnered with the Fraser Valley Invasive Species Society as our contractors. We started last year with them for all of our weed species, and it's been working really well. There's efficiencies gained there because they're already doing contracts, for example, with Ministry of Transportation and with some of the hydroelectric corridors and utility corridors. So it's working out well. Next slide. We have approximately eighty thousand dollars in surplus in this account. And this is important in part because of the lack of a guarantee from the provincial funding that we get year to year. It's also important to be able to address any new species that could be considered an issue. It's much more worthwhile to invest in making sure it doesn't take a foothold in our region than it is to try to respond after it's already established. So we do work with the province and our adjacent jurisdictions just to be aware of threats and to continue monitoring. But we need to be able to respond accordingly and aggressively if there is a concerned weed species that emerges. Next. All right, this shows the, this is the three percent increase proposed, largely going towards the salaries, benefits and overheads. And I'll just point in that the surplus on here does remain relatively stable, which is sort of what we're after, to be able to utilize it in case we need it. Next slide. Just some other considerations there. We are, I I will point out that with regards to the provincial funding, we we receive usually twenty seven thousand five hundred every year for this budget. And we are optimistic that we'll get it again. We have always done in the past, and there's no reason to expect not. So we we are optimistic that it it won't slow us down moving forward. If it does, we'll be able to utilize the reserves for for this year. That's it. So any questions?
Questions through to Mr. Lilly. Okay, let's move to the next item.
Okay, thank you. The next item will be presented by Mr. Yatter Wong.
Thank you. By the six of two, the details of support to Hope and Harrison for the G I S and regional mapping. Next slide, please. So by the six of two, this budget allowed for G I S technical and operations support for Harrison and Hope. Next slide, please. Year twenty. Here, we're talking about the reserve. We have hundred and eight thousand and with a surplus of seventy four thousand. Next slide, please. Revenue and expenses are expected to remain relatively steady with a very small slight variation between two thousand and twenty two and two thousand and twenty three. This is in order to cover surprise and miscellaneous like expenses like software upgrades or hardware upgrades, like a product. Next slide, please. And once again, as you can see, the variation is quite small. And the revenue and expenses are again expected to remain relatively steady with no big increases. At this point, thank you very much, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you. And I don't hear any, so let's move to the next item.
Okay, thank you. The next five budgets will be presented by Ms. Christina Vagtivine. And that will conclude our presentations on the budgets. And we will just go back to two of our summary slides for a brief wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon again. Right in front of you is a picture from Island Twenty Two. Next slide, please, Kristy. So this is our Regional Park Service. Everybody is in it with the exception of Abbotsford. So all of our municipal partners as well as electoral areas. There's nine different regional parks and three different regional trails. Over the course of the year, thirty percent at least increases happened of usage within our parks due primarily to people staying local and trying to find places to recreate with COVID nineteen. There's, of course, with COVID nineteen, there's been some operational costs which have changed, some have increased, others we've tried to reduce. And some of the revenue streams have also changed. We're seeing some reductions in that. As, for example, shelter rent, picnic shelter rentals and those large events are not happening due to the COVID nineteen restrictions. Next slide, please. So we talked a little bit about this. In addition, building reserves for future asset replacement is a big project, which we're starting to work on as well. We've been very fortunate over the number of years where we've received a fair number of grants, specifically the Job Creation Partnership Program as it pertains to fixing up and improving assets. But creating that plan moving forward to make sure everything is in line will be a project we're working on. There also are a number of projects planned for in this budget. These projects are not going to be impacting taxation, but would be coming from either a grant source and or a reserve and or a surplus fund. Next slide, please. So you'll see the increase in tax requisition of three point five percent. The three point five percent primarily reflects the increase to staffing and overhead as well as a little bit of the changes as it relates to our supplies and our costs as it pertains to COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. These are the initiatives planned for two thousand and twenty one. Quite an extensive list, but again, not impacted specifically by direct taxation as there are grants and reserve funding allocated for these particular projects. Next slide, please. You'll see the reserve levels and surplus levels in front of you. We'll note that the vehicle purchase reserve is in the negative. That was due to the purchase of three vehicles this calendar year. And it's a new reserve for us specifically because we do require those a lot of vehicles to be able to do the operations. Typically, that was all lumped within the reserves. But planning for future vehicle replacement, having that as a separate line item is something that we're striving to create separately. So that doesn't really impact the budget other than where the money is flowing to, which will help us for planning. And then you'll see the financial summary in front of you. You'll note that in two thousand and twenty one, the lines as it pertains to capital is high. And that pertains to the projects that we're also doing. And the salaries, benefits and overhead is also very high compared to two thousand and twenty because this is also some staffing on a part time basis, a short term basis to facilitate the projects that are being undertaken. Next slide, please. So the operation maintenance are continually being reviewed and looking at our assets to make sure that we're continually in line is what we're attempting to do. Are there any questions for regional parks?
Dixon.
Go ahead, Director Dixon.
Thank you for your presentation. Just when I'm looking at probably your last slide, it's alignment of future regional park and trail opportunities with board and community priorities. So that would be an opportunity maybe down the road for other areas to have a regional park or regional trail.
Absolutely, absolutely. It could be. I know there's ongoing discussion of what is a regional park versus what is a community park. That's a big impact in the electoral areas. And where does the board want to see it? Do we want to put money away for land and purchase land or those types of things? So it's more of a strategic continuation of planning exercises as it pertains also to our strategic plan of looking at those outdoor recreation. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't see any other questions. Next item.
So the next budget is the Hope and Area Recreation Center. So this encompasses the operations for the arena and the pool. As you can imagine, with COVID nineteen, it was a very different year than anticipated with a very reduced revenue stream. And in some cases, increased expenses. In other cases, there was cost savings due to the facility being shut. Of course, it's very much directed by what's happening with the public health orders and what we're able to safely do to operate that facility for the public. There are many assets that are due for lifecycle replacement in the whole entire facility. And in this budget in particular, there's a lot of looking at the account codes to ensure that things are being expensed where they should be. So we're getting a true So we're getting a true reflection of costs in the different areas. So that's some of the line items removed around in this particular area. Next slide please. So again, COVID-19, we're anticipating this to affect 2021. Sorry, we're in a new year, 2021, as well as last year. And if there are any projects that are planned, those are being planned from the reserves. And the building of those reserves will be critical for future asset replacement. Next slide please. You'll note that the surplus and reserves are relatively healthy. However, when you need to do things like pool pumps and HVAC systems and all those types of things, they can add up very, very quickly. And there are a many number of things that are coming up to be needed to be looked at. So the asset management planning again is a large focus for this particular area. Next slide please. These are the proposed projects for this particular year. And in general, most of these are related to life cycling and end of life, end of life projects. Next slide please. So you'll see in front of you the financial summary of the five-year plan. It just reflects the five years and what we're looking for moving forward. Next slide please. And you'll see the tax requisitions as it pertains to the different areas, Hope and Area B. So how the increases do affect the individual average residents. So also with this operation, reviewing the resource requirements to maintain the operation maintenance and focus on assets, the asset management program to be aligning with the reserves will be critical for moving forward. Are there any questions on this particular budget?
Questions from directors? Don't hear any.
So moving on, then the recreation budget is also pertains to Hope and Area Recreation. Recreation typically involves things like programs, Canada Day, special events, specialized programs, et cetera. Again, a large impact this year due to COVID-19 and trying to focus on going more to virtual programming options. And the, we did have a recreation programmer hired for one time this year. And we've just recently been informed that our manager of recreation services is extending her maternity leave. So with that, we are going to, the intention is to utilize some of those funds to continue that recreation programmer position through the year. And instead of using surplus funds, we'll actually be able to fund it from within budget. Next slide please. Demands and service level expectations in COVID-19, I think that's the theme here. Next slide please. There are some surplus and reserves in this particular budget. And there is not a specific plan for them. However, looking forward for a plan for when we get post-COVID and what we're going to do and program expansion will be the focus of this particular area. Next slide please. So the recreation program service delivery will be something that we will have the recreation programmer focus on to ensure that we're offering a wide range of services that meet the needs of the community. Are there any, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. The financial summary is right in front of you. And it's a relatively stable budget as you go throughout the number of years. The Club Child program and programs you can see were, are being impacted by the revenues because of COVID-19. And so it's a little bit hard to project where we're going to end up. However, we, there is some COVID relief funding that has been applied toward this particular service, which will help to minimize the increases in the taxation for 2021. So this is the taxation impact slide.
Director Hamilton.
Go ahead.
Thank you through Chair Lam. I just want a brief comment to Christina that I really appreciate how she recaps the taxation impact to the individual homeowner. Because I think that's important. I don't, haven't seen that throughout the presentation, but I noticed you're doing that and it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for this particular area, it's just reviewing the resources requirements to manage and accurately reflect program costs and figure out how we can offer programs in COVID and moving into the future to align with the community needs. Any questions?
That's a good example, Ms. Vagtivine, of where COVID relief funding would be being utilized to offset. And there's at least two electoral areas that are benefiting from some relief funding there. So that's positive to see. Next item.
All right. So the next budget is the Regional Parks West slide, which is primarily, there are three regional parks in Abbotsford. And a portion of area G is also within this. So Sumas Mountain, Glen Valley and Matt's Creek Trail Regional Parks. So we can move to the next slide, please, Kelly. Thank you. So there are increasing service levels and demand. Again, COVID-19 is seeing record numbers in these parks, people wanting to go out. And we just need to ensure that there's funding levels that are in place to maintain adequate reserves and planning for the future. These are the parks, just as a reminder, that did come over to us from Metro Vancouver and are operated by the city of Abbotsford with the exception of Sumas Mountain, which is still operated by the Fraser Valley Regional District. Next slide please. There, this budget is a small increase, which is just really related to slight increases in overhead and staffing. Next slide please. So we're working very closely with the City of Abbotsford Parks and Recreation staff. Some of the items on the list for 2021 include the second half of the Matt's Creek Boat Launch feasibility study. I know that there's been different information about that. So whether or not that will actually continue on because I know that there's potentially some other things, but it's certainly been an identified issue in terms of boat launch access in Abbotsford. And so that's what that money had been earmarked for. We're also planning to undertake a project at the Eastern Lookout to make another lookout on Sumas Mountain more accessible for people. So you'll see the reserves, vehicle land and other reserves. The top reserve number is money that was, has been collected this year for the first half of the boat launch study. And the intention would be the second half would be collected in 2021, starting to put some money away into land reserve and vehicle reserve. You will see some surplus in there. Part of that money is money that the Fraser Valley Regional District did receive from Metro Vancouver at the time when there was a transition of these particular parks. And others were cost savings through the operations because not full year of operations in that particular time. So there are some funds for future use when that need arises. Next slide please. So you'll see the service area financial summary in front of you and it's a pretty steady budget moving forward. Next slide please. So working continually very closely with our partners in Abbotsford, just around community needs in that particular area. And planning for the future, I think, is the story over here, asset management maintenance. But where is this place going? What do we need? What are the needs of the community? And that's what we'll continue to work on for this particular area. Are there any questions for 7:35?
Questions? Director Blue?
Thanks, just to comment on the boat launch. And I know that we had talked about this previously, so I won't belabor it. But it occurs to me that the operating costs and things like bylaw enforcement and just, you know, general stuff that happens at boat launches. I know from Moody and Bernaby both experienced, they have extensive experience with dealing with issues that are surrounding these. So I think that those implications of not just the, the capital and the location and all of those other things, but the long-term operating costs would be of interest to have included with the second half of the study. Thanks.
And that's by understanding that that would be the case. Yeah.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Next item.
So the, the next one is the Village of Harrison Hot Springs Boat Launch. This is not impacted by taxation. There, we have an operating agreement with the Village of Harrison Hot Springs. So we, as in the Regional District, operates this boat launch. And there are increasing operating costs with everything, particularly as it pertains to the busyness of this location as well as COVID-19. There are no reserves in this budget. And so that is the story there. So it's really important that we make sure that we're covering all the costs for this particular area. Next slide please. Fees have remained unchanged in this particular area and those fees are directed by bylaw through the Village of Harrison Hot Springs. Just recently, a review was taken and there's been a change to the bylaw. So there will be a slight fee increase, which will help to deal with some of the increasing costs and ensure that this unit is, funds itself. There is again, no taxation. So there's no reserves, very little surplus, if any. Whatever the agreement as we have it states that if there is anything that's left over at the end of the year, it's split 50% between the FERD and 50% towards the Village of Harrison Hot Springs. In that case, so it does benefit us from the fact that if there is some money at the end of the year, there are some extra funds that will go into parks reserves. Next slide please. So you'll see the plan and you'll see the increase in the revenues. And that's primarily related to the anticipated revenues associated with the boat launch fee increases that the village has put into place. Next slide please. And we're continuing to work through the operations of this boat launch with the Village of Harrison Hot Springs. It's a very, very busy place, particularly in COVID. We're not seeing a slowdown. Lots of people love to go to this beautiful area. And traffic control and use of this area is, can be pretty intense. So continuing to work collaboratively with the village to make this successful is a high priority for us. And that summarizes the Village of Harrison Hot Springs Boat Launch.
Great. Any questions? Go ahead, Director Fazio. And you're on mute there.
Thank you. Just to thank the staff for the presentation on the boat launch and for the excellent work they did this year. The boat launch, they reviewed a lot of the area with the busy traffic that we had in place due to COVID. Everybody hit the, everybody hit the boat launch this year, but they did an outstanding job of controlling things, reviewing the area and what new measures could be put in place. And I'd like to thank them on behalf of the, of the village. Thank you, Christina.
Yep, thank you, Ms. Vagtivine. Okay, and next item.
I thank you, Ms. Vagtivine. I want to point out that that section, the Harrison Boat Launch, those slides were added. It was an oversight. They were not in the original package. So following the meeting, we will resend the package. So everyone has the, the complete packet. So I'm just going to, I've asked Ms. Hodson to go back to two of our summary slides. I want to thank, thank everyone, including all of my colleagues who, who have eagerly jumped in and participated in this budget process. It was a new process for all this year and hopefully you found it as informative as I have, starting a new, new role in, in an organization. We have, as you may have noticed, there are some key themes emerging. We have some asset management work to do, capital planning, reserves and surplus balances to be evaluated. And we need to continue to monitor risks. I want to point out that this process was done today for 31 budgets, but we have done this exact same process for 119 budgets, most of which were reviewed with the Electoral Area Directors in the fall. So I've asked Kristi to go back to these two slides here, the summary slides, because I wanted to point out that we have done, done all of those things that we've, that we have presented today. And they do result in a 3.1% overall increase in taxation for the average, average resident in metro, in the, in the member municipalities. So all of those activities are 3.1% overall or $3.59 for the average residential property. Now going over to the electoral areas, their summary. Thank you. It results in an average increase of $14.57 for electoral areas or 3.6% overall. So at this point, before we move to closed, I wouldn't mind asking if you had any further questions?
Thank you. And so directors, and just before we move into questions, I do want to express my thanks to staff. I know that for sure the municipal directors are probably familiar in their own municipalities, going through a process like this generally is a couple of days, probably two-day retreats or objectives and planning process and fairly in-depth with presentations from staff. And so to have the regional district staff be able to do this in, in a couple of hours and, and kind of compound it down and, and then add the challenge of trying to do it remotely over Zoom, it's no small feat. So I appreciate, I appreciate the staff effort that's gone into this. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, this was an opportunity to get a little bit better insight into some of these, some of these budget areas. So I do appreciate that. And then to directors, I appreciate especially directors, electoral area directors who've been on for quite some time today. Appreciate your, your patience and sticking with us as we get through this. So let's take any final questions on the process. And then we have one short thing to discuss in closed and will be completed for the day and we can go have our dinners. Okay, going once, going twice, not hearing anything. So we're, we're all good with this budget. Director Bales, did you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say the power's been off for 45 minutes. So going off the phone and going into closed, I'm not sure how that'll work. But, or just going into closed, I'm not sure when I'll lose power. But also I wanted to just talk about how in electoral areas, not, not all services are equal. So when we're talking about averages, it hits some people really hard when they have a lot of services in one community. And then others don't have that much service, don't have too many services. So when we're taking the average, often that doesn't reflect what's happening to some communities. And I'm really cognizant of how hard some communities are being hit for, for costs. So that's just my comment.
Thank you, Dirk Mills. Okay. All right. So in terms of process, after we get through the closed portion on the regional grants and aid, staff are going to be looking for, I guess there's a few more weeks until we move to our board meeting. But I would ask directors if they have comments or questions or things that have come up during this presentation that they'd like to ask staff to get those questions in prior to our board meeting. And I think the intent, Ms. Lonsborough or Ms. Kinnaman, the intent is to get first and second reading at our, at our, at our board meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And we will also be publishing some materials on our website for the public consultation requirements of the Local Government Act.
Great. So still time for directors who'd like to provide some staff feedback or get any clarification or questions that have arisen today. But I'll just ask one more time and just to hear from any directors who may have anything they'd like to bring up with the benefit of having the full board here to hear your comments, questions and/or concerns on the budget that you've seen today. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, staff. And process-wise, Ms. Kinnaman, should we adjourn?
Yep, just looking for a motion, a resolution to close the meeting, Mr. Chair.
Let's move by Director Fazio. He's not at his table, but it's moved by Director Dickey, second by Director Clute, all in favor, those if any. And we'll go into closed, just give you a second to whatever.
Let's, let's take about three minutes so everyone can stretch their legs and we can stop the recording. Thank you.